At this point, we're going to return from executive session. Please stand in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have a motion for approval of the minutes that you've all received.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Isgro?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
At this time, we have a moment for city council, vice 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 mayor, right?
Yes.
Mike, please join us.
Well, good evening, school board and superintendent. I just want to take a moment and offer my sincere thank you for the letter writing campaign. What a fantastic turnout, over 435 letters going to the governor's office next week. I'm sure he's going to be very pleased when he shows up to his office and sees all those letters. So, I really just want to say thank you again. Mike, thank you. And to the teachers that were involved with that, I know it probably took some time out of the day for some additional teaching, but I just want to thank them for jumping on board with this. It's just so special. And you guys are just great and really appreciate the continued collaboration that city council and school board continue to have and work on. And more importantly, I'm going to Washington next week for three days with the city manager and our utilities director. And while we are out there, we actually were able to get a meeting with one of the congressional representatives that sits on the transportation committee. And we will be talking to him about Amtrak and the letter ideas and the success of the letters is something we will be telling him about. So, we're really excited to take this positive news story to DC and let our federal legislators know how important this is, especially for the youth and for the students of the city. So, thank you so much for grabbing on to this and working with us. Really appreciate it.
We wish you luck in this endeavor. Wish Hamilton well in this. Please keep us posted on where things are and how things progress.
Sure.
And what else we need to do.
Yeah, we'll let you know. Yeah. Senator Lang actually met with Governor Dewine's senior staff this past week with the Senate President Huffman and a couple of ODOT officials. They love the idea of Amtrak, so they're going to proceed. Unfortunately, there's a lot of studies that have to be conducted in the state. So, we're looking at right now about three years before everything might be said and done. So, I'm pushing for hopefully less than that, but it looks like it's going to be about four years until we start seeing some trains come through town. But we're making the right moves here and keeping the foot on the gas pedal. So, but I will keep you updated.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, you have some second readings that are going to be recommended for approval tonight. It's the same group that we had the first reading on back in January. And so, there's a, you know, a significant number of recommended board items for approval there.
And that needs a motion. We have a motion to...
I'll make the motion, sir.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Mrs. Baker? Mr. Hancock?
Mr. Isgro?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Tonight, we had the pleasure of three different presentations from various board and buildings. Our first building up tonight is the Hamilton High School freshman campus. And I am here to introduce to you Ty Smallwood, principal of Hamilton High School freshman campus. So, Ty, this is your show at this point.
All right. So, when we started this journey to do this presentation, the Bengals were headed toward the Super Bowl. So, as you can see, we use the football teamwork theme. I was really hoping that today we could celebrate a Super Bowl victory. But unfortunately, here we are. We're still excited for the Bengals, but at the freshman campus, we really try to focus on is teamwork. And I really want to shout out Ms. Wisebroad for her leadership over the last several years. I really, the ball was already on the tee there at the freshman campus. And the work that she did to build that team was incredible. And so, when you look at our presentation tonight, I want to make sure that a lot of the things that we're doing are really just building on the successes that were already there when we took over this school year. So, BU at Big Blue is kind of our theme of the year. And we did a little rebranding. We looked at the FC Cincinnati logo and we thought like, how can we really build on that teamwork and have fun, given the fact that the last two years in education has been some of the craziest times any of us have ever experienced? We really wanted to try to thrive instead of just survive. And so, when you look at our theme, it's BU at Big Blue. We wanted to build on that teamwork. So, last school year, I had the opportunity to do some shadowing with Ms. Wisebroad to kind of get a feel for what the freshman campus was like. And in looking at the goals that we were trying to present to our staff for the school year, I was able to go to Hamilton High School's graduation. And I think I talked to Mr. Isgro after that event. It was such a great environment at Virgil Shorm Stadium. There was just so much hope in the air. And I think a lot of people attended that event that may not have been able to previously. And for me, when I see that picture, which I was able to take a nice tweet of, that really dawned on me at that moment that that's our goal, to get those students to that finish line. And not only just get them there, but also have a plan for them to have a pathway to success. And so, when you look at the freshman year, a lot of times, students in the February months, it's a little bit of a doldrum. You know, it's hard to see the end goal. But when I looked at that picture, I thought about like, what could we do as a team to make sure that students understand the urgency of their freshman year to get them on track? I want to shout out our leadership team here, Mr. Pate, Ms. Blevins, and Mr. Holbrook for allowing us to go to Louisville this year for our leadership retreat. Us three, Mr. Blue, Ms. Eichberg, and myself, had an opportunity to do some strategic planning to look at what specifically we wanted to accomplish. We did a leadership book read of a book called Upstream. And in that book, it talks about different proactive strategies that you can use to be successful as a leader. And there's an entire chapter about Chicago Public Schools and what they did with freshmen on track. So, if you look at that research out of Chicago Public, they defined freshman on track as passing five full-year course credits and failing no more than one semester of a core course. What they saw over the course of many years is that students who are on track freshman year, as you can see this graph here, if they're on track freshman year, it pretty much correlates one-to-one with their success in high school. And so, we looked at, as a team, building on the success of Ms. Wisebroad and what she's done, how can we capture that exact mindset for our students to understand that freshman year is their first opportunity to be successful and do so with a data-informed approach? Mr. Blue is going to hit us with the current reality data.
Okay. So, when we first started looking at this, we actually looked at last school year's numbers, which we all know was a pretty unique year. So, we took a step back and we said, where were our students at the end of last school year? How many actually met this definition to be considered on track? What we came to realize is that close to 13% of our students were considered to be not on track for graduation. So, obviously, we put our minds together and we said, we got to create a plan for this. Part of this plan is expanding our credit recovery options, which Mr. Smallwood will talk about later on. This was a program that was actually started at the freshman building three years ago by Ms. Wisebroad and Mr. Honan, who you will hear from later. And looking at that, we have the light blue line here that is representative of the graduation rate of 93%. If you reflect back on our building goal of 95% of our freshmen, we want to be above and beyond what that building goal is, just to make sure that we reach that A on the state report card for freshmen to be on track for high school graduation.
So, when we started this year, as discussed, COVID at the beginning of this year led us to be about 20% off track when we looked at interims. And you know, quarantines and all kinds of things had to do with that. But when we saw that number, we decided, all right, this is a point where we can choose strategically some things that we can do to get back on track. So, we met with our culture and conduct committee and determined that the best way to do that would to be looking at what John Hattie had said about self-reporting grades and collective efficacy. So, us as a team coming together and helping the students to reflect on their grades and where they're at. And we came up with the Freshman on Track mentoring program, which has really been a success in our building. Our teachers are buying into it. We have mentees, so do our counselors, and even our support staff have been part of this program, which is just meeting with students twice a week for about five minutes to say, where are you now? What are your goals for the week? What are you going to do to get back on track for the next week? And then reflecting again and moving forward. And it has had a lot of success to help our students get back on track. And another part of this was a staff member came to us with the idea of an after-hours study and ball activity, which is basically, we have had about 100 students come to most of the after-hours events where they come in, they get tutoring and support for about two hours. And if they're successful and they do well, then they get a reward at the end of basketball or our teacher held a painting event, which was really cool. The kids loved that and things along those lines. So, it was very successful, this pairing of the building relationships with the kids and encouraging them to really work and focus on what they needed to do. So, I have this video about it.
We really wanted to start this program. It's called After Hours Study and Ball because we really want our students to be on track for graduation. We looked at a lot of the research and it really points to that freshman year as pivotal to student success. So, every day on the announcements, kind of a broken record at this point, but we say four core out the door because we want all of our students to achieve those four core credits. This was an opportunity for them to come here, study, be productive, earn prizes, have food in an environment that has certified staff members that can help them out.
You know, I think this student body is devoted to the school. I think that they have bought in into what we have preached to them in the classroom. And I think they're, not only do they want to get the work done, but they like having a good time and they kind of buy into what we're selling so that it works out well.
So, it's really been successful. As you can see, we're bursting at the seams. This program is growing. And we have a lot of staff here onsite with our four-core out-the-door shirts. And we're really here just to support our students and do the best that we can.
A lot of the kids at our church go to Hamilton schools. And we want to give to the community in a way that helps those kids. And we heard about this event and that they were in need of some help. And so, we devoted all we can to sow into that.
And really, this just shows you that not only are the students dedicated to their success, but the staff, the community, New Life Community Church has donated prizes for our students to attend these events. And we just really want to wrap our arms around these freshmen to make sure they know they're supported and that we're going to get them on track for high school because it's just so important for their education.
Okay. So, after four and a half weeks, we really were shocked with this data. Really, the mentor program represents a five-minute conversation. And for me, it was just kind of a shot in the dark. We thought maybe this could have an impact if we just have one trusted adult that's pouring into students' lives. And I think going along with what we're doing as a strategic planning with our district, it's about people. And I think that's something we've emphasized over and over. Four and a half weeks into this, we had some really impressive data to report back. 70% of the students that were being mentored had recovered a core class that they had previously been failing, only four and a half weeks into it. 102 additional passing core classes were added. So, again, I think it really speaks to just our staff that's willing to go above and beyond, even in the midst of quarantines and everything else that was going on, they're able to recover these grades. And even more success at the semester, so not only are we focusing on classroom instruction, but these relationships that our teachers are building with our students, we're already at 92% at the semester. And that's in one of the most unprecedented semesters, at least in my memory, as far as student absences with quarantines and that kind of thing. So, I really think we're on track to hit a 95% goal. And if our students in the freshman year can be at 95% on track, the chances of us as a district getting our graduation rate higher is pretty significant. So, it's really encouraging data. All right. So, that's a huge focus on what we do. But I wanted to make sure that we captured that piece as our core focus and mission. But something I get really excited about is the idea of bringing our community together. We have 17 different neighborhoods within our community. We have some historical divisions that have been in our community that I think are important to name. We have eight different elementary schools. We have Garfield. We have Wilson. We have East Side and West Side. So, I captured that with some of those maps. But the freshman campus represents the first time that students come together under one roof. And for me, as a lifelong Hamiltonian and someone who really wants to see the work of equity be something that we prioritize, I thought it was an important thing to capture as this freshman campus experience. So, we started an initiative called One Hamilton 17 Strong, which I'm really proud of. Even in the first semester here, we have a leadership group. And we're right now the only thing in the city of Hamilton that has a representative from all 17 neighborhoods, even within 17 Strong. So, Mr. Pate and the support of the board has been great with this. The city of Hamilton has also been really supportive of this initiative. So, you can see a really diverse student population and just future leaders of our community coming together for that first time at the freshman campus. So, really proud of this initiative.
So, a big piece of the One Hamilton 17 Strong for us is unifying our students, creating a shared vision, and really establishing them having a sense of purpose and a sense of self within our building. So, this slide kind of hit all three of us here. What you see is community engagement and what you see is opportunity for future generations. So, Mr. Smallwood and his son there to the left, my son in the middle, and Mrs. Eichberger's daughter there to the far right, those are all three of our children here. And our goal is the engagement of our students, creating an inclusive environment where students can feel free to BU at Big Blue. That's what we want kids to feel like, be safe, have a fun environment to thrive in, establish a unified, shared vision, prioritize. What does it mean to you? What does it mean to your community? How can you give back to the freshman building? And then obviously, create a lasting community impact. We want our students to be engaged now and be engaged forever, whether it's in their school building, whether it's in community groups once they graduate, through athletics, through fine arts, through after-school clubs and activities. We want them to be engaged and create that lasting impact. Again, I would just like to go back to the overall support that we've had. I know Mr. Smallwood talked about this, but from the school board, the city of Hamilton, a number of our partners, without any of that One Hamilton 17 Strong, freshman on track, none of that would exist without the support that we get from everyone. So, I would just like to say that and thank everyone for their efforts in supporting us at our building.
So, with this, having students get connections within the community, a big thing we've been working toward is giving our students opportunities to get local jobs and internships. And I have to say, having people come in and our students have really been open to the idea, more students than I thought were interested in looking at jobs and how to do it and things like that. So, we had Mr. Cannell came in one day and the kids were very interested. We had Ohio Means Jobs came in and Pastor Shaq came in and helped them with permitting her jobs program where the students can just learn the skills they need to get a job. And the Ohio Means job really helped our kids who said, you know, I don't have a way to get to an interviewer, things like that, and driver's training, basic things that they just need help getting to. Ms. Silva in our building has really helped us organize this and get things on track. And it has really encouraged our students and given them something to work towards. You know, when they have a job, it helps them stay motivated and focused on what's really the goal here. So...
And so, we've had a lot of early success with this. And I want to again shout out Mr. Cannell and the work that he's done in connecting our students. At the time of this presentation, we created, it was 152, but it's well over 200 students now who have filled out this job and tent form. And if you look around town, there's a lot of vacancies and actually, the state of the schools addressed today, the tens of thousands of jobs that are available within our region. When I see students lined up to talk to Mr. Cannell, lined up to talk to Ms. Silva, ready to enter the workforce and get their foot in the door, it's really encouraging. And I know I share this with Mr. Zari as well. We talk a lot about how to expand these partnerships, how to make sure that we connect with hype, connect with different local employers to make sure that our students are ready to go. Because we all know, Hamilton used to be looked at as an industry lead around this entire region. And we want to bring that back. We want to bring that energy to our community and to our students. All right. So, kind of wrapping this all up, we really want to focus on pathways to success for our students. We feel that getting our freshman on track in the freshman year, understanding the importance of that freshman year academically and then also within the community is what's really going to make an impact to achieve our district's mission of positively impacting learning in life. We want 95% of those students, that's think outside the box on how to get them there because a lot of our students come to us, you know, from a variety of backgrounds. And it's just really important that we do things like mentoring, the after-hours program. We've had the support of the board and we really are thankful for the support of Mr. Pate and Mr. Wright alongside. And that wraps us up because we want to BU at Big Blue in 2022, y'all. Thank you.
Ty, thank you so much for sharing with us today. I love the mentoring. That's a missing component at the freshman school to get those kids ready. I would think that if they didn't have success at the freshman school, they sort of just give up because it's a huge, once you go down that, start down that path, it's hard to back up and overcome those challenges and those roadblocks. The one word that keeps coming back to my head is partnerships and how you're developing partnerships with your teachers and with the community and with the business community. Kudos. It's great to hear good news coming out of the freshman school, it really is. Not that it's been a bad thing, but this gateway to the high school is so important for our kids and our community. Thank you.
I just want to add, it never ceases to amaze me what incredible work everybody does in this district. And so, I thank you for that. And the focus on our kids is just incredible. And thank you for making sure that they get on track and they are on track.
Yes. Thank you very much. And you recognize the need of these children. You reached out, you collectively thought these things together, and you try them and they're successful. And that's fantastic that you're getting those children ready to go to the next step.
Absolutely. Same here, you know, I'm a fan of Team Smallwood. I'm a fan. So, absolutely, it's always been a pleasure to work with you and seeing just amazing things that you're doing in the school, at the freshman building, and bringing your love for the city and intertwining that with the school and the students, I think is just amazing of introducing them to how great our city is, but also allowing that to expand on an education level and also the fun component and getting them involved and starting them now. And like I said, again, I noticed a particular cute kid in that video, maybe mine. So, I get to hear firsthand of the things that's going on in the freshman building and get to hear firsthand of how things are going and how well he's enjoying his experience of being a freshman. So, definitely, I'm super excited about that and happy to hear all the great things. So, I was excited about this presentation for sure.
All I have to say is, good job and keep it up.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
Ty and Megan and Tyler. You know, the freshman building's a challenging place, as you said, in the fact that it's the first time that the entire student population of Hamilton meets together. And I think you've recognized a couple of different things. Number one, you've made an emphasis that the freshman school is the beginning of high school. And that was emphasized throughout. And I think that's real important understanding. And the other thing that you've done is that it's tough when kids are there nine months and they're leaving to develop a culture. And you've done that. And you've done that through staff collaboration and buy-in. You've done that through fun activities that engage students, but yet still have an academic purpose and focus. And I think those are really, really important pieces that we can't discard. And we're going to see the impacts of that. I remember when we placed you over at the freshman building. And one of the things you said to me is that the community work that you do is really important. And I said, well, right now, and at the time you were at Highland, right now, you're impacting the Highland community. You get everybody at the freshman building and you can see the results of that. So, I appreciate everything you do. I know you planted Pastor Shaq's child in there for a lot of reasons.
You noticed the first year of the summer hype program, I was in there. Yeah, we were doing some gardening and whatnot, yeah.
But thank you, Tyler, Megan, and Ty for everything you're doing over there. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you, guys.
Next, the next presentation on the agenda is with our CEO of secondary programs, Mr. Pate. And you know, as Mr. Pate gets ready to set up here, I've worked with Rick for nearly 10 years. You know, his work ethic, his motivation, his support to anything that I've ever asked him to do has been unwavering. And I want to publicly say that and I appreciate everything that he does. And you know, he's a huge asset to this district. We've asked him to wear a multitude of different hats over the last six years. And so, he's going to talk to you a lot about some of the things that we're doing in secondary education, but I just wanted to publicly make those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. It has been a wonderful 10 years for sure. And board, thank you so much for letting me be here tonight to present to you. It's been a long time coming. I think I was originally scheduled in November to present to you guys and just with a lot of delays. That's where we've gotten to. It was a 60-minute presentation then, and I've got to knock it down to 20 tonight. So, I will do the best I can. So, as you know, over the time that I've been here, it's been a lot about changing the mindset of the secondary world. And it was about growing students. It wasn't always just about achievement. And so, what I tried to pare down my presentation, a lot of what I'm going to show you tonight, is the work that the secondary world is doing at growing our students. So, taking the students where they come to us, doing everything in our power to get them where we want them to be. And you'll actually see that slogan on this slide, "Meet these students where they are and take them where you want them to be." And that's kind of been our motto in the secondary world for a few years now. We obviously also want to increase the district graduation rate. We want to increase the opportunities for college credit plus, and we want to expose students to college/university campuses. Those were still the same initiatives that Mr. Holbrook gave me the day he hired me for this position. And I'm proud to show you some of the data you'll see tonight and also say that we're continuing to plug away at that every single day and every single year. Remember that this past year, the state report cards were basically null and void. They were all non-rates. So, I know with presentations I've done to you in the past, we've really dug into some of those grades and what they are. I just wanted a quick note to let you know that, remember, there isn't much to report on that from last year. So, it'll be less of that. When we look at Hamilton High School, one of the tools that we use in the district to gauge if students are growing is what's called EVOs. And this comes actually from the state. And what you want to see on these charts is students and the dot being in that dark green. That means we're growing students at least or more than, I should say, a year's worth of growth. And so, I'm not going to bore you with all those details, but the one point that we do get to see in EVOs at the high school level is algebra. And you can see there in 2019, our growth index was a 2.25. And in 2021, it was a 12.57. So, you don't have to know all the nitty-gritty of those numbers, other than to say, that's a huge jump. It's not typical. And kudos to the teachers and the administrators who are working with our students in those Algebra I classrooms at the high school. And many of those students are some of our struggling math students, if they're still in Algebra I when they get to our main campus. So, it's a lot of great work. I was going to cut this slide out, but Mr. Isgro in particular, I remember you always loved this slide. And what this is, is this is comparing us to all the other similar high schools in the state. So, the state takes all of your demographic data, your population, your poverty level, urban versus, you know, suburban, those kind of things, and they give you a similar cohort of high schools, your most comparable districts. And so, basically, I'm not going to have time to read through all this, but what you want to see on this spreadsheet here or this image is green. Green means we beat someone that was very similar to us, had similar types of students, so on and so forth. I'm very proud as I look at that screen because you see a ton of green, you know, exponentially more green than you see red. And so, I'm just very proud of our high school staff, administrators, that we can look at an image like that and see that much green on there. So, very, very proud of that. Middle school update, math in particular. Remember where we've been in the past as we had a very disjointed curriculum, outdated materials, lackluster achievement and growth. And I'm happy to show you some of the data that you'll see tonight that we continue to move forward. We have common curriculum and model lessons now. We are consistently using MAP and Alex for diagnostic data to drive at student growth. We're continuing to support our connected math. We're continuing to increase the amount of time we're spending coaching with our teachers to improve their instruction in classrooms. And we're seeing positive trends in student growth and achievement data. Again, just reminding you, you want to see green on this. As you look here, Garfield Middle School's EVOs data, all three of those categories, language arts, math and science, you see mostly dark green. The one hiccup we do have there, and we are addressing this with some laser-like focus, is eighth grade language arts. It is our data. I don't hide from it. We got to work on that and we are working on that. But I'm also very proud of all those dark greens that are on that sheet. So you take the good with the bad sometimes when you look at data like that. And again, remember, this is student growth. This is taking kids where they are and taking them where we want them to be. We also are using MAP as a tool to gauge or judge growth. So that's more of a third-party vendor. EVOs is from the state level. So again, what I like is we're seeing a very good correlation between those two entities. Again, you can see there in math that both seventh grade and eighth grade are meeting, our observed growth is meeting the projected growth that we're supposed to get with our students. So very proud of the staff there at Garfield with their math, MAP data, as they are meeting those growth targets. Wilson overall, when we look at that again, dark green up and down. And I'll tell you, you look at that OST 2021 mathematics data, again, you've got a 1505 and a 1503 on there for seventh grade and eighth grade. That is just phenomenal growth data to get. And I would stack that up against a middle school pretty much anywhere. That's just absolutely amazing. And I'm so proud of that staff, again, that are able to achieve that type of data coming in. Similarly, not just what the state's telling us, but what does a third-party vendor tell us? Again, you see that periwinkle color chart or bar there going way above where that gold diamond is or rhombus is. That means we are exceedingly past what the projected growth was for those students at Wilson. And again, it's just nice to see it from two different sources that you're growing kids in that way. Where are we heading? We're going to continue to do what we're doing because we are growing kids and we do believe we're going to continue to see achievement. We're just going to ramp it up. We've added additional coaching to the grade levels of seventh grade and eighth grade. We have a new person who's going to oversee mathematics and instruction at a much greater detail. So we believe that's going to pay off for us as well as we move forward. Following the same piece here with reading, we're going to show you the data here. Continuing with common assessments, common short-cycle assessments, we're using MAP data. We're implementing READ 180 to help our most at-risk readers. And we've also added additional coaching support through April Brooks and Carla Castator is really picking up a lot of extra support for our middle schools in our English Language Arts. Again, amidst the pandemic, we continue to see dark green growth in the areas of ELA. Again, the MAP data showing eighth grade there. We talked about the red dot earlier. The third-party vendor's telling us that we're a little bit behind. So we're going to keep working at that. Wilson, dark green again across the charts. And again, MAP is telling us that we are exceeding expected growth for our students in seventh grade and eighth grade language arts. So again, very proud. We're going to continue working on things. We're going to continue to improve instructional practices in the classroom, finding ways to really intervene and provide targeted instruction and intervention for some of our most struggling students. But continue to do the work because it is paying off. We are seeing that growth every year of our students. And so we want to keep kind of plugging away at that and continue to, as they continue to grow, Mr. Holbrook has said this for years, if they grow and grow and grow, eventually that achievement comes, right? You can't not have achievement eventually if you continue to grow kids every year. All right, so let's talk about graduation and post-secondary. We have come a long way from where we were at graduation rate over the past five years. We've come a really long way in the amount of college credit plus offerings that we provide our students and the amount of free college credits that they're getting. And we are also continuing to work at getting more of our students to get that industry-recognized credential, which allows them, if they choose, to go right into that workforce, making a living wage and providing for their families. So one of the things I'm probably most proud of in any presentation that I can give is when we did get our data back in the most recent report card. We did reach a 92.5% graduation rate at Hamilton High School, which gave us a grade of a B. And, you know, I am just infinitely proud of that score. It's been something I've been dedicated to for the past handful of years, and I'm determined to get that thing to be an A. And I think we are actually on the track to do that. And as we continue to improve our processes, continue to improve what we're doing in the high school, we're going to get it. We're going to get it. We've come a long, long way. I think 77% is when I came in and I'm just so happy of the team, what they've done. It's just been absolutely phenomenal and kudos to them, the administrators, the teachers and the students, that they continue to just work on that every single year. Just so proud of them. As Mr. Holbrook has shared with the board in the past, we know about this really exciting opportunity we have of the early college program with Miami, or early college academy, I should say, with Miami of Hamilton. They do have a website up and running now. We have students applying. I am proud to say that we already have five students that have applied to that. And we're targeting more students to continue to get them engaged with that opportunity. And we just think that's going to be a phenomenal thing for our students to be able to not only get their high school diploma, but simultaneously get that associate's degree and then be able, if they choose, to continue on to work towards that bachelor's degree down the road. Let's see. So as I talked about earlier, college credit plus is a big focus that we've had. I share this chart with you just so you can see where we were in 1617 with Sinclair. We had zero students that were involved in college credit plus. We worked up to 231. Last year, I just wanted to show this drop-off because what happened is many of the Sinclair professors were not able to come into our building. So we saw a noticeable drop-off. But I am happy to report that when you see this chart from next year, that red bar is back up high again. And we have, you know, hundreds of kids back in there in those classrooms doing that. So. Again, where are we going? We want to continue to get that A on that graduation rate. We're going to continue to increase CCP and honors diplomas. We're going to continue to work on getting more students' industry credentials. I'm working with Mr. Zary very closely on a sophomore cohort that we are going to target upwards of 250 students to get a rise-up industry credential. That is a 12-point industry credential and it is a pathway for them to graduate. And so that's very, very important that we work on that to get that for our students. Lastly, as you know, we have partnered with Butler Tech over the past couple of years formally. And that process is going really, really well. The collaboration is phenomenal. A couple of things to report on that is that we are working with them. And an advanced manufacturing lab is under construction at the high school. That is going to be adding welding booths, as well as various machining and lathes into that space, which will increase the students we're putting out into that workforce to fill those very much-needed jobs that we have in those industries. And so that's going to be a huge opportunity for Hamilton High School students. Also, we have an opportunity, and this is huge. We're going to have 17 students that are currently in our health science program. And Butler Tech is kind of using us as a pilot with this. Those 17 students, and I believe they're all young ladies, are going to have the opportunity to complete their LPN before they graduate high school. So the first two years of that, they're going to be able to finish with us. That's going to save those students $7,500 towards finishing that. The following half of that, they will finish at their adult workforce center through Butler Tech. They will have to come up with some way to pay for that piece, but we're going to be able to help them cover $7,500 of that as they exit the high school. And then from there, they could obviously go get their RN and all of those things. And we heard at the State of the Schools speech today how much the health industry is in need of workers, so. And lastly, we have added the emerging media program, as well as a business and hospitality tourism program, because we know with Spooky Nook coming in and all of the various restaurants and things opening in the city, we need to fill those jobs that are going to be out there. We, the application season just ended this year, so I'm anxious to see what our numbers are like that got into the various Butler Tech programs. But as you heard John Graff today at the State of the Schools talk about, this year was the first year that career tech centers actually had to use a lottery system. So it really does come down to luck at that point. Your kids are no longer interviewing, building a resume, it's lottery. And so I'm hoping as many of our students at Hamilton have gotten in, as you can see on this chart, if we go back to FY15, we only had 25 students accepted to the Butler Tech campuses. And in FY21, we had 157. So it's a significant improvement to the number of students that we've gotten into Butler Tech programs outside of Hamilton High School and on their campuses. Questions?
Not as many questions, it's just kudos on what you've been able to accomplish. And I know, you know, you're probably breaking your arm trying to pat yourself on the back for the 92.5, but I think that's all of us are just thankful, not just for you, but for the entire administrative team and the teachers to move those students to that position. And that's wonderful news. That's wonderful news. I love the slide with the green. And it shows that, you know, we are doing a lot of good things in this district. And the other thing that hits me is, no matter where a student wants to go in life, we're trying to help them get there. Whether they want to go to college, whether they want to go into a, you know, a technical program. They, the opportunities here are just incredible for our students. And I like to equate it to a buffet. You can grab french fries off the buffet or you can get prime rib. And we've got a lot of prime rib on our buffet. A great opportunities for kids. And that's what it's all about. I appreciate your hard work on that, Rick.
Yes, and not patting myself on the back. I lead a wonderful team of people. They get the work done. I'm just blessed to be here every day and get to work with them. They are doing a great job for our students and just the community as a whole.
Mr. Pate, exceptional work and thank you so much and your team. You know, I think I said this earlier, after hearing the State of the Schools and hearing these presentations tonight, how proud I am of our district and of all of our teachers and administrators. So thank you very much.
Mr. Pate, again, as Meg said, thank you, you and your team. Dedication, drive. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think one thing that's often overlooked, especially at the secondary and in particular the high school level, is the emphasis on growing students. We're so focused in on this achievement metric. And one of the things that Rick and others have been able to go out and really emphasize is, let's look at that from a fairness standpoint. If a teacher gets a kid in their classroom and they're four grade levels behind, I don't know anyone that has the magic dust that can have that kid encumber four grade levels in nine months. But it is reasonable to state, you know what? They're in your classroom for a year, they should grow a year. And when you're seeing growth scores of 14 and 15, those are extraordinary. And the emphasis on growth gives our teachers a real fighting chance in the fact that, yes, this can be accomplished. And we're seeing significant growth with kids. And that just continues to snowball. And, you know, that was an emphasis for ever at the elementary levels. At the secondary level, it was driven a little differently. And that emphasis on growth that we've placed, I think has made a significant, just, it's a game changer in just mindset and how we approach our daily business. And Rick, I appreciate you taking that growth mindset and taking it to the secondary level because that's a challenge. Being a former high school teacher, being a former high school principal, I can tell you, that is an absolute challenge. And we've been able to do that. And so thank you for everything. Our last presentation tonight is from Mr. Scott Ahonan. Scott is the principal at the Miami School. And for the second semester of this year, he has had the wonderful growth opportunity of also overseeing the Virtual Learning Institute. So I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ahonan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Holbrook, for the opportunity to lead the Miami School and Virtual Learning Institute again this year. It's been a challenge, but I have welcomed it and have grown professionally and personally with a lot of the students and staff that I've got the opportunity to work with. So tonight, I do want to highlight some of the changes from last year to this year in all three programs that the Miami School encompasses. The Miami School Blended Learning School that I run during the day, our Big Blue Academy, which is our night program at the Miami School, as well as the VLI. All right, so the purpose of the Miami School. I got it. The purpose of the Miami School, as Mr. Pate and Mr. Smallwood talked about how great we're doing, is really building and growing the district's graduation rate. So not only are the staff and students at the Miami School working extremely hard to get their diploma, but we are very strongly looking at the facts of the graduation rate and doing all that we can to make sure that we get that to the A level. The Miami School does offer an alternative option to students in the district to the Hamilton High School. We have, as you'll see, greatly increased our numbers from last year to this year, almost tripling our enrollment, so that we have many, many more students taking the opportunities to not only recover their credits that they may have been behind on, but also just giving them an extra option that they have enjoyed and exceeded in our building. So some of the types of students that we have in our building predominantly is credit-deficient. We are able to work at a little bit of a quicker pace than Hamilton High, is that we're not tied to the semester schedule to earn credits. Our students work mostly two courses at a time, so they can be laser-focused on getting those done. As soon as they finish those courses, we add on a couple more and then a couple more after that, so that they can focus on small amounts at a time and really grasp and master the material, so they can earn those credits a little bit quicker. We also have many students that, for one reason or another, just didn't feel comfortable in the high school. It could be that there's 1,800 to 2,000 students walking the halls over at Big Blue compared to the 100 to 200 at a time in the Miami School. We have many students that, again, have attendance concerns with the high school, having a hard time getting up and attending. In the Miami School, we do have three different options on sessions. We have a 7:30 to 10:30, an 11 to 2, and then a 4, sorry, 3 to 7 PM, a night school as well. We have many teenage parents that needed a flexible schedule that we can offer them, whether they are currently with a child or have already had a child at home. This goes for both male and female students. At one point, we had 20 teenage parents enrolled in our program and all 20 doing well. Another one, again, flexible scheduling so that students can work either to support themselves because they are independent, living on their own, or we have many students that are working to support their families financially as well. So this year, we adopted the hashtag "changing the narrative." Many of our students, again, across the district, but especially in the Miami School, come to us with baggage. They come to us with a story. Whatever the story is, it's not always a positive experience. And so we are really trying to adopt the, let's change the narrative. You are in control of your future. So we have signs all over the Miami School that literally list these things, that your past does not have to dictate your future. You can change the story of your life. You can accomplish anything you're willing to work at. You have, you can have a positive impact on this world and you are worth the effort. So that's what, that is really our motto and our mission this year, is we are building these students up emotionally as well, because when they come to us, they come to us sometimes defeated, but that, our goal is for them to leave victorious. Really small numbers here. So going from last year to this year, last year in the Miami School, we had a full-day schedule where students would come to us from 7:30 and leave the voting at 2:00. This year, we have changed that, so now we have two kind of sessions, a morning and then the afternoon. So they are only focusing on two subjects at a time compared to the four that they did last year. Our enrollment, at the time that I created this, we had 127 students last year, we're up to 312 this year, so almost tripling the number of students that we're able to serve under the Miami School. Our night program, Big Blue Academy, more than tripled. They've gone from 21 all the way up to 64. And then our deferred graduates, now this one's not based on availability, it's based on needs of students that are graduating. Last year, there was 14 deferred graduates under the Miami School. This year, we're at nine. Students with disabilities, another thing that we have greatly expanded, not just the numbers, but number of intervention specialists and supports we're able to offer, going from 14 all the way up to 44. Our English language learners went from eight to 30. The big reason for this is another mission of the Miami School is that we are accepting, not accepting, we're bringing in all of those newcomers to the country that may come to us having not been in a school for four, five, six years sometimes with the SLIF designation. They're coming to us, they're getting culture lessons, they're getting language lessons, and we're doing our best to prepare them for life outside of school. If that comes with a diploma, that is our mission, but we're really trying to prepare them for life after school. And most of our ELL students that are newcomers to us are also working full-time in order to pay for their lawyer fees to get their legal status. So they are on modified schedules so that they come to me three days a week and then are working the other two days with the other times that they're working after school. Our number of transfers, because most of our students do come to us straight from the high school. high school, we went from eighty-four this year to seventy-four. So, those are two hundred and seventy-four students that wouldn't have had the opportunity to either recover their credits or have that alternative option had they stayed at the high school. And both last year and this year, at this point, we are at eighteen graduates. We are, we have many, many more that are on cue this year. They have to finish their industry credentials, which Mr. Pate did talk about with the Rise Up program, that I'll highlight here in a second. So, our typical day, again, is, is the two ninety-minute blocks where they are focusing on English, math, science, and social studies, where in the classroom, our teachers in the blended learning atmosphere are teaching lessons to each of their students every day. Those are, usually consist of twenty or thirty minutes of prep-type assignments to get them to pass the OSTs, the end-of-the-course assessments. The rest of the time, the students are working on edgenuity, working on their Chromebooks, working in small groups, or one-on-one with a teacher. So, as Mr. Pate did mention, we have a strong push this year for Rise Up in our, in our school. So, what Rise Up is, is an industry credential, I'll go ahead and read it. It's a training and credentialing program that provides foundational employability skills to help people land jobs and get promoted in retail and beyond. The curriculum from this came from nationwide research, working primarily with ma- many major retailers, including Walmart, Macy's, Home Depot, BJ's, and Nordstrom. So, it's, it's widely accepted. So, many of our students in the Miami School, I don't have the exact number, but it's somewhere between ninety and ninety-five percent, do not enter a four-year program after graduating through the Miami School. They go straight into the workforce. So, that's why this is a huge opportunity for our students to get, to get a leg up, really. They're getting the skills that they'll need, the soft skills, as well as the resume-building and interview skills that they'll need to go straight from the Miami School to supporting their families in a, in a full-time job. We are expecting around seventy students right now to get industry credential at, at the end of this year. Like I said, we had eighteen, and actually, it's nineteen, we had one graduate today, graduate so far. So, what I do with all of our graduates is I do an exit interview with them, just to kind of get their feedback on their experience with us. So, I ask them the three questions. How did you end up in the Miami School? In what ways were we able to help you? And what comes next for you? So, I'm going to highlight some of the answers that they gave me. So, I came to the Miami School because I had a lot of mental health issues, and the Miami School was a better fit. I was going to drop out from Hamilton High School after I turned eighteen. I couldn't concentrate at the high school. I had two previous students recommend it to me, and then I wanted to earn my credits as soon as possible. So, of our eighteen graduates we've had so far, sorry, nineteen, two of those are actually juniors that were able to work at an accelerated rate, and graduated really a year and a half So, what'd you think of the Miami School? How could be, or how did we help you? I got through here because of all the individual attention. I got a ton of encouragement from the teachers here. I liked how quiet it was. I liked how I could move at my own pace. I was able to do the work in the way that I wanted to, and it was very comfortable. I liked the smaller school atmosphere, and the Miami School is the best thing that's ever happened to me. That one's my favorite. Future plans here, some of the different programs they're already enrolled in. Butler Tech, are a different trade school, we have some going to Greater Oaks. I had one that was going to barber school. I have two that are going on to Miami Hamilton. One that is going to be a fireman or EMT. I have a student that got accepted into the Arts, Art Academy of Cincinnati. We have several that are going into construction. One that I'm going to highlight here in a second, that's going to be a chef, welders, electricians, and computer engineer. So, one of the students I wanted to highlight is Tyree Green. He was one of our first graduates this year. So, his answers to this question was, I came to the Miami School because I was behind on my credits and lost motivation while at the high school. I wanted to come here because I didn't feel comfortable there. The Miami School is the best thing that ever happened to me, and I have applied and since been accepted to Cincinnati State for Culinary Arts.
Really?
He's got great ambitions to have his own restaurant one day. This is one of our more recent ones, William Lopez. He said, I came to the Miami School after I moved here with my family from Florida. I really liked all the teachers here in the Miami School, and because of them, I am the first one in my family to graduate high school. And I plan on enrolling in the police academy. And since then, he has worked with our school resource officer, Todd Hurst, and has applied to be a dispatch employee, because you can't enroll the, into the police academy until you're twenty-one. So, he is eighteen. All right. Switching gears to our night program, the Big Blue Academy. Their mission is to provide a supportive, differentiated, inclusive, and goal-driven environment that fosters student success. And their motto or hashtag this year is Individualized Education for All Learners. So, I'm sure we're all familiar with NAEP, Individual Education Plan, for students with disabilities. Well, Big Blue Academy has fifty percent students with disabilities, fifty percent not, but they have it within themselves to meet with every single student and parent to come up with their own individual plan, whether they're, they have a learning disability or any other disability or not. So, they are very, very individual-based, and have found great success that way. So, a couple quotes, one from a student. I am thankful for the place where I can learn in a school where I am, I'm sorry, where I am comfortable. I shouldn't say uncomfortable. Typo. A staff member said, I have no, or I had no idea, like, a program like this existed. I am very impressed that the staff has the resources available and is able to meet students where they're at in their educational journey and help them succeed. And I do want to, and it's not in here, but I do want to highlight and give props to our teachers that do work with these students. They, they do work with some of the, the more challenging students that we have in the district in our night program. Many of them are placed there from expulsion hearings or for disciplinary action, but there's very, very little discipline issues in the, in this program, and that is a hundred percent due to the staff that we have. They are extremely caring. They, they work a full day in our schools. I think we have some elementary teachers that come in the evening to work with our, our Big Blue Academy students, but mostly from a middle school and high school level. But they are very excited about the program, they buy into it, to the fact where they are now recruiting for us to find some other teachers because they like it so much. So, some of the things that they do, just like VLI and the Miami School, edgenuity is their guiding curriculum. Each student participates in designing their plan, which is what I referenced earlier, where the parent and guardian involved in the process. And this is a stat that our Big Blue Academy administrator, Breka Russo, is very proud of, as well as myself. She has an eighty percent success rate of getting parents to come in for these meetings, which that is above and beyond anything I would have hoped for, to get that many parents involved. And that is why I believe that she, in the program, is having as much success as they're having, is because they get the parents to buy in as well. They do meet in person on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from three to seven. They have Google meets with live instructors every day of the week from eleven to one, and then again on Tuesday evening. Individual help sessions scheduled with the huddle leaders, that's what they call their teams in the program, is the huddle teams, huddle groups, where they have a, kind of a, a sports environment as well, where they have team competitions between the groups. And then one thing that they attempted and are doing well in this year is called Super Saturdays, and that's what the next slide is. It's one thing that Breka came to me and said she wanted to try this year, and it was an optional Saturday school. And when she said optional Saturday school, I didn't want to discourage her, but I said, well, let's temper the expectations on this, above and beyond what she and I expected with this program, where she has seventy-five percent of her students come in voluntarily on Saturdays, once or twice a month, for a couple hours to get extra attention. She does bring in food, she brings in games, she makes it entertaining, but primarily, kind of like the freshman campuses after-school program, been a huge success. A couple service projects that we've done in Big Blue Academy. The Pathways to Home organization is set up for younger teenage parents, and we were able to put together learning educational activities for them to do with their children, where the Pathways to Home program will walk them through the benefits of reading to your child and doing hands-on activities with your children. Two of the SPCA and Adopt a Dog Centers, Tales of Hope and Stray Haven, our students built a blanket, or created a blanket for the dog, and that when adopted, the dog does take that home to their new home. So, the kids really enjoyed that program. Anything, working with puppies is, is a big hit. So, our graduates, this is another push that, that we have this year, is to make sure that when our students leave us, they, they either are enrolled in college or are employed. Going back a couple years, so we had seven graduates through the program, all were employed before leaving us. One went on to a four-year program. Last year, seven graduates, we were able to get five of them employed before leaving us. And so far this year, we're five for five, that they are already employed and moving on to a full-time career. Lastly, the Virtual Learning Institute. Going from last year to this year, it's a complete change in the number of enrollment based on the pandemic and opening opportunities and everything else. So, we had a little bit over twenty-six hundred students last year, which composed twenty-eight percent of our district's enrollment. This year, we're a little bit under four hundred, kind of fluctuates above and beyond four hundred, which is about four percent. We went from sixty-one teachers last year to eleven this year. Last year, all of our students remained under the care of their home schools that they were coming from. This year, they're all under the Miami School and our IRN, which we did separate and create their own separate IRN this year, the state code, because of our online learning waiver that allowed them to learn from home a hundred percent of the time. And lastly, so far this year, we've had thirty-two seniors in the, the program, meet their graduation requirements, and we have thirty or thirty-five more that will graduate, will have a hundred percent graduation rate through VLI this year. But including in that, we'll have eleven juniors that are going to finish early this year, because they are able to work at their own pace. That's what I've got. You guys have any questions for me?
Been busy.
I enjoy it.
I love what you've been doing with, with all these, especially the Miami School and the Big Blue Academy, giving these students options that they thought they would probably never have. That, that's the important thing. I, I've been interested in this Rise Up program a little bit. Is this a online program? Is there somebody teaching it?
So, so it is an online program. It is, we do have an instructor from Butler Tech that does come and assist, that she walks them through and gives them study guides, but it is an online curriculum.
Cool. It seems like the students are enjoying this, this program, gives them some real-life experience and...
Yeah, it definitely does.
What are some, what are some of the topics that might be covered?
So, a lot of it deals with retail sales, so it talks about the different interactions that you might have and how to appropriately respond to that.
That might be important.
It is important.
Yeah.
Again, the, the soft skills is, talking with Mr. Cannell earlier, what most employers in our area, and probably nationwide, are looking for in future employees, is can you relate to your customer? And that's what this course deals a lot with, is basically how, how to do that.
I would assume that would be, obviously Spooky Nook is on the horizon and on the thoughts of a lot of us. Some of these kids, are you expecting them to go, or possibility of, of going into that workforce?
There is a, a good possibility of that. I know Mr. Cannell has a connection that we, we've talked about, getting them connected. And many of our students have reached out for help getting, getting a job either there or elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Very good.
Scott, thank you. Again, tonight, we've heard three great presentations. Last week, or two weeks ago, same thing. I don't know how anybody can say that this school district is not dedicated to their You went above and beyond. Thank you so much.
Ditto with those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, thank you for taking a group of students that may not be able to learn in the traditional setting, and providing a culture and an opportunity for them. I think that's real, that, that's a really important mission, because we have seen successes. And those successes simply would not have existed had we not provided the opportunity, and had you not led that way. And so, this district, myself, and everyone up here is very appreciative of the work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Great job.
And your teachers.
Yeah, and your teachers.
Great job. I don't believe we have, it's our time in our, our meeting for public participation, I don't believe we have any. So, Mr. Holbrook.
Yes, first, I want to just compliment not only the presentations that we've seen tonight, but our educators at large, you, you know. And we talk about, we talk about many of the trials that have gone on over the last several years, but this is what we do every day, and this is what we've done every day for the seven years that I have been in this district. And yes, we have to adapt to different situations and changes in that, but you can see just from some of the presentations, that it's nice to be getting back to some of those presentations, because you really get, you, you really get a more thorough understanding of the, the important work that's being done out in all of our buildings, and the impact that it's not, it's having not only on ninety-five hundred students, but a community at large. And I think that that's a critical component. So, as we continue these presentations, you see that. Our teachers work hard. Our transportation folks work hard. Our food service, you know, our EAs, you know, our media center specialists, our secretaries, I mean, it's a, it's a complete group effort. And running a district this large, you have to, you, you have to have good people surrounding you. And I, and I said it today at the State of the Schools, and I'm going to reemphasize it, you win with people. And, and we've got some of the best people that I've worked with in a thirty-one-year career, and, and I'm just blessed to be a part of it, but it's exciting. I, I get excited when I see that. I get excited when I see those growth scores, get excited hearing about opportunities that we're providing kids to connect in the community, and, and working with these kids that, that may not fit in the traditional sense. That's okay. All of that's okay. But providing those opportunities and seeing success with that, 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 that's, that's a driving force that gets you up every morning and, and pushes you to continue to, to move forward. So, you, you know, I appreciate and thank everyone out there for that support. And, and our board has been absolutely wonderful to work with, unwavering in the support that you've given myself and, and our entire administrative team in the district, in allowing us to get a little creative. And so, thank you.
Well, working with so many different varieties of students, we, we, we cover it all, don't we?
We do.
We really do cover it all.
The continuum, the, the continuum is, is extremely wide.
Yeah. I do thank all those that presented tonight, and the schools, and the, or the, the different components of our district that you represent. Thank you so much. Board members, we have in front of us a consent agenda that you've all received and reviewed. I need a motion to accept that agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of the items? Okay. Mr. Hancock.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Israel.
Yes.
Going to interrupt for one second here. Stephanie Yokes is here tonight. We just, Stephanie, you just got hired as the next principal at Bridgeport Elementary. So, if you'd want to come up and introduce yourself and say a few words, that would be wonderful. That's kind of all, that's kind of all it takes, right there.
Yeah, that was it.
I knew, I knew you had it after the third yes.
I'm Stephanie. I met you guys a few weeks ago. It's nice to see you again. I just want to share that I am so excited to be given this opportunity to continue to lead at Bridgeport and serve the students, families, and staff that are there. I believe wholeheartedly in the mission of Hamilton and the direction that we're moving in, and I couldn't imagine being anywhere else, so I'm very excited.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mr. Hancock.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a few items on the finance agenda tonight for your consideration. Yeah, the first item is confirming purchase requisition. The second item of more interest would be appropriation modifications for the Permanent Improvement Fund. And that consent agenda that, that you just passed was just short of one point seven million dollars, just, I guess, just over one point six million dollars in new technology devices that are going to be purchased, and they're going to impact five hundred and fifty-five, I think, classrooms around the district. Certainly a huge project for, for these devices to go into that are going to impact student learning. And as we do that, it'd be nice to have the money to appropriate it. We, we have the money coming in, so we're recommending that we increase the appropriation from the Permanent Improvement Fund from four point six million to, to seven million dollars. And again, there's probably going to be about another million, million one in that fund by the end of the year. And we're not, so we're not appropriating all of it, but we are using a good bit of it for some, some very good things. We have a, a donation from Dick's Sporting Goods for twenty-five hundred dollars. And then finally, financial reports for January. That puts us now seven months through the fiscal year. And we anticipated fifty-eight million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. We received eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars less than that. We'll call that close enough on those kinds of numbers.
Pretty close, yeah.
So that's why you didn't see a whole lot of comment from me in the email earlier, or late last week, because those numbers are running as expected. Highlights coming up, you know, the, the first half tax element's going to be coming in in the next month or so. And so we're always interested to see how that is going to work because that's about half of your tax revenue for the fiscal year. And we'll be interested to see how that does pan out. But right now, everything looks fine on that side, the expenditure side looking fine as well. We anticipated fifty-five thou, fifty-five million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, I should say. We've spent fifty-six million, one seventy-three, three thirty-two, or four hundred and forty-seven thousand, three thirty-two more than anticipated. That, that's not a particular concern to me at this time of the year. There, there's plenty of time for those to narrow. Some of the interesting numbers to look at, I would say that the one that jumps out at me is purchase services. And not so much the variance, it's, it's running two hundred thousand more than anticipated, but look at what it is from compared to previous years. And that's indicative of the fact that all the scholarship payments, all the payments to the, to the various charter schools, those are no longer there. So it's, it's just interesting to see how those numbers flow. It's very different from what we've seen in the past, and so we'll be creating a new trend going into the future. And again, right now, they're, they're running pretty much as we expected. And we'll continue to watch those throughout the rest of the year.
I'd like a motion to accept the Treasury's report.
A second.
Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Israel.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be on March tenth, and that will be, will be probably going into executive session at that time. So at this time, I'd like a motion.
I would like to, just make one.
Pastor Shaq, would you like to explain or tell people about the program you're going to do this weekend, Mr. Buyback?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes.
So this weekend at St. Paul Miracle Center on Front Street, we'll be doing, I hope we'll be doing a gun buyback, and that's just in response to gun violence that we've seen in our city. A lot of times, things aren't always readily reported, but there is shootings in various communities that we've seen throughout our neighborhood, and that is the, the negative side of things, but it's, it happens. And we want to make sure that our kids are always able to, be able to have a safe neighborhood to be able to reside in. And with that, I partner with an organization called Street Rescue and Community Action to be able to take these guns off the street and people are able to willfully turn them in. And community guns just means guns that are stashed in abandoned buildings, places that are easy accessible for people to be able to get guns illegally. So not infringing on anybody's rights to have them, but those that should not have them and that do harm and bring, you know, damage to our neighborhoods and shootings. So we'll be doing that this weekend from ten to two at St. Paul Miracle Center on the corner of Front and Persian. And with that program, we hope to, since we've been doing, since I partnered with them four years ago, we've taken all, over a dozen weapons off the street, and we've collected thousands of rounds of ammunition, as well as several knives and different things that's come off the community. It may not seem like a tumble, you think that's one less gun that's off the street, that's not easy accessible to people in the community to be able to bring harm, and that no family has to experience the pain that gun violence brings. So that's what will be happening on this weekend.
I just want to thank you for all the things you do in the community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The hype and, and, and the gun violence and just appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
Absolutely, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share about that, thank you.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.